We'll begin by welcoming a new alternate member to the board, Mr. Paul Wilson. And we will announce that we've elevated a previous alternate to regular member, Brett Sutcliffe. So, we will begin now with a roll call. President this evening, Mike Dayhern, John Kelly, Selectman's representative, Brett Sutcliffe, John Randlet, Bill Goul, John Cookieberg, alternate Paul Wilson, alternate Bob Dragon, alternate Ellen Bishop, and alternate Jack Scarborough. And President, the Chair, Fred Goul. Let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, we have the full board. We'll be appointing an alternates for the last someone has to recruit themselves. Public comments, item three on our agenda. If any member of the public would like to comment anything not on the agenda, most of the time you do so. Seeing no public comments. We're going to move to approval of the minutes of our meeting of February 5th, which is a work session. And we're all given a copy of it in a package that was mailed out. It's a very short set of minutes, so it should not take too long. And our usual process is we look for everything, emissions and corrections. We start with page one. If you see anything, signify to the Chair and we'll make a note. And page four. Hearing no comments relative to errors and corrections. I'll look for a motion on acceptance of minutes.
A motion to accept the minutes as read?
Motion made by John Randlet to accept the minutes as read, seconded by John Cookieberg. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As a unanimous vote. Item five on our agenda is correspondence. And I'll ask Maryam to review the correspondence that she feels deserves discussion.
At this time, for the most part, we just got conferences, announcements about conferences. There is an annual spring planning and zoning conference. It's on May 2nd in Manchester. And as I said, I included it in your mail-out. There was a call for entry for 2009 Merit Awards for Plan New Hampshire. Oh, and they said last year that the Penni Youth Center that's right in our downtown, that that was one of the winners. And then three was save the date. There's a New Hampshire Planners Association Annual Conference, June 4th and 5th, and that's in West Lebanon, New Hampshire. So, if you're interested in attending any of these conferences, let me know. The town will pay for your cost of registration and making carpool, which you drive down, and maybe get super mileage. Just let me know. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Maryam. We'll move now to item six, a report of our committees. Board of Selectmen, John Kelly.
Not much going on. I'm just waiting for the election to see if we can, you know, find out who's going to be on the board and probably start up some of our activity after that.
Okay, thank you. And Paul, Conservation Commission Liaison, you're going to be initially our liaison and then we'll follow you, appoint you there next in April. But it's assumed that you will speak for them now.
There is nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. And North Country Council, Transportation Committee, John, that's you again, John Kelly?
No.
Anything to report? And Zoning Board of Adjustment, Maryam?
Also, no report.
No report.
It's a slow month.
Okay. Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District Source Section, we have not appointed a person. We're going to defer that until our April meeting. And we will be appointing either a regular member or an alternate to that. Our previous member, Dave Switzer, did sit on that committee. And number six, the Pema Joasit River Local Advisory Committee Report. And I believe we're looking to appoint someone new on that one as well. Is that correct, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. And the Town Planners Report.
What we were asked last year, I think, was if we could have the staff, Town Attorney Bernie Waugh, give an orientation to all the members and the existing members too, about the different rules and responsibilities and what it means to be a board member, what the legal obligations are. So, I contacted Bernie Waugh. He's agreed to do this on April 7th, which is a Tuesday. And we typically meet on Thursday, but this is how it worked with his schedule. So, it would be a joint meeting with the ZBA. That's their regular meeting time. It is April 7th, and it will be at 7:00 PM. And I'll send out some kind of reminder, but if you want to put it in your, you know, save the date for April 7th, 7:00, and especially in here, in this room, especially the new members, but it doesn't hurt for the veterans to come too, because he'll update us on all the new legislation. There is new legislation about emails, you know, how do we deal with that and write to know. So, it's still helpful to go to even if you're a veteran.
Thank you, Maryam. Okay, and a new business, we have one item this evening, and it will be a presentation by a representative of the university relative to a new parking lot, and it will be a public hearing as part of that process. Our protocol in this situation is that we ask the town planner to brief the board on the applicant and the application. So, Maryam, would you please do that?
Okay, we've got a request from the university, and this is to build a temporary parking lot. It's going to be for 491 parking spaces. And the location is north of the National Guard Armory. So, it's between the armory and the community gardens. And we've got site plans. I've laid them all out. And the engineer, John Scott, he's here in the audience to ask questions afterwards. The existing site's an open field, some of which is gravelled. He did give us, sorry, give us pictures too. I can pass those out. It's hard to tell right now. We went out to the site, Fred Goul, and I also had Mike Vignali and he will be with us to go out to the site. But it's covered with snow, so it's very difficult to see. But it was good that you submitted the photographs from August, because then you can see. So, some of it was gravelled, some of it has re-vegetated itself, so it's grassy again. And it's sort of hard to tell what extent is in that gravel state and what is in that re-vegetated state. They will create the temporary parking lot. They'll use concrete barriers to define the rows and aisles. And it's proposed to be used from September 2009, or spring, sorry, spring 2009 to August 2010 while the ice arena is being constructed. And the ice arena is over the bridge on the Holderness side, adjacent to the PSU Facilities Building. So, if people know where that is, when you go over the bridge, it's over on your right. You'll see that there's a parking lot there, and that's what they have to use as a staging area and then take those people that are parking there and move them up here. Since in their application, they said they'll return it to its natural state, the only thing that's going to remain is an asphalt apron, we don't have as many concerns. The other constraint that we have is there's RSA 674:54, and I gave everyone a copy of that, which basically restricts us in that we can only provide non-binding written comments because the university is under, it's considered the state government, so local regulations can't supersede the state government. The property is owned by Alex Ray, but since it's being used by the university for university use, they fall under this 674:54. But what our concerns are has to do with, since we can't put, even though it's in the environmentally sensitive zone, we can't impose that on this project because that's a local regulation, they still are liable to the state regulations. So, our concerns have to do with the shoreline protection area. And actually, Mike Vignali, he went out there with myself and we measured it, and this is where the shoreline protection area comes in. And then this is just environmentally sensitive zone, just so you know where it falls with the parking lot. Floodplain issues, all of it's in the floodplain. Some might even be a floodway. Mike Vignali had concerns about erosion control measures because of the nature of the cars and them being that close to the river. He doesn't want it to affect the Baker River. And we had traffic management issues because they'll be the bus stop. They're going to relocate the bus stop over here to this lot, and they'll be having to make a left turn. So, we would like the university to get DOT approval, which they've already applied for a driveway permit. And the driveway permit, they will look at site distance and they will look at that left turn. And also, since this is just north of the armory, and the armory was cited by the Historic Resources Board of being archaeologically significant because of the Abekanaki Native Americans that settled there. You'll see there's a plaque there. This is just north of that, so there could be archaeological significance too, because it's not like the Native Americans could have just lived right at the and have lived in this area too conceivably. So, we would like, they have to be checked out. And then also, Water and Sewer, Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, their office is right across the street, but they indicated to us that this is in the wellhead protection zone. So, what we, what the staff is looking at is that the planning board include the aforementioned seven comments that I distributed to you as part of their comments, as part of the written comments. Specifically, we'd like a letter of compliance from DES. Where was I? A letter of compliance from DES shall be submitted to the town for their permanent property records prior to including the site for a parking area. In other words, we did get a response from the engineer, which I passed out to all of you. And basically, he got my, the staff concerns, and it basically seems to indicate that they've already researched it and they're not, there's no need for them to get these approvals. However, I was on the phone with DOT and DES and Natural Resources, and they do want to look at each one of these. So, I don't want to have an issue of, I'm told one thing by the state, you know, that needs to be reviewed, and then told something else by the applicant that doesn't need to be reviewed. So, there won't be any conflict. We'll just have a letter of compliance in the file that says either, yes, we need further review, or no, it's fine. We don't need to look at it further. But as long as I get something from DES and DOT, you know, each state agency signs off and says, "We do not have a concern with this," then I put that in the file, then there's never a question. We know for sure it was looked at. So, I basically use that language for DES, for the town engineer, so he can make sure that they do the silt fencing along the perimeter of the site, a letter of compliance from the DOT, a letter of compliance from Division of Historical Resources, and a letter of compliance from Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, that it won't impact the wellhead protection zone.
Thank you, Maryam. And for the board, we're not limited to those comments that the staff has suggested. If anything comes out during our discussion with the engineer that you feel should be an additional comment, we can frame that in our motion as well. So, I think Mr. Scott is here. Okay. And what we normally do is we ask you to come up and give us your view of what the project's all about. And if you can address any of the issues that Maryam has raised, that's good too. You get, you're on the floor. And what we'll do is after you finish your presentation to the board and we ask questions of you, we'll ask you to sit down and we'll open a public hearing. And then we'll close the public hearing, and then the board will discuss. And then we'll look for a motion relative to what our comments said. Thank you. John, go ahead.
Okay. My name is John Scott. I'm civil engineer with Bruce Rush, I'm one in Monica. I'm here on behalf of the university. Also here with me tonight is Ellen Shippey, who's Director of Physical Plant for the university. As most of you know, or some of you may know, the university's planning on constructing an ice arena. That's very mentioned. Construction is planned to start this spring. The site of the arena is right over top of the long-term student parking, which is located on the near side of FSB, between Avery Street and Facilities Building. And also, the site entails removing all of the existing parking that is there and reconstructing it to fit the new footprint. Obviously, that's where all the long-term student parking takes place, so the university needs to find a place for those cars during construction. And they have negotiated with Alex Ray for use of this property, which has been used in the past as staging area for construction projects. They, it was used that way for when the university built the Langdon Woods student housing adjacent to that. We aren't planning on any significant real construction. There's the asphalt apron, which we propose to ease any difficulties of the traffic going on to and from Route 3. The only earthwork would be to fill any small depressions which might be in there or to smooth out. I think we're up spot. We're going to cut the grass, but not strip anything. Basically, we're going to leave the surface as it is, which is an excellent surface for what we're proposing to. It's actually kind of gratuitous, a piece of land like this is so close to the university. They also have, there is an existing footpath which goes behind the armory property. It's actually parallel to the intercepter sewer.
Would you put your finger? It's not clear in this drawing where it is, John, sir.
This was the Langdon Woods.
Is this the solid line here?
Yeah, this is the Langdon Woods student housing. The lower parking lots for Langdon Woods are here, and the pavement comes around to here. There's a fire lane that goes this way.
And this is the walkway here?
There is an existing path that goes down through the woods, right through there. It's actually cleared because of the sewer intercepter that is there for the Village District. We are planning to put some lights on the parking lot, obviously for safety. Students come in at all hours of the day and night. And that will tap into an electric manhole on the back of Langdon Woods lot, run an overhead line. And put, it won't be lit nearly as much as a permanent lot would be, obviously, because it's only going to be for a year. And we'll also run a telephone line down there so we can erect an emergency blue phone.
What will the surface of the walkway be?
Just, we'll just clear back a little bit of brush to make it a little bit wider, not to do anything else to it.
Gravel, direct?
It's gravel already. It's basically in pretty good shape right now. And it will have a few lights on it too for safety as well. No significant grading really anywhere. As to the concerns about erosion, a couple of things is that, first of all, it's very flat. The, it's gently ditched. It's about a 2% grade across the lot, which is about what you would want to do if you were grading it from scratch. There are no drainage paths or concentrated streams or ditch lines. So, base, and it's a very porous surface. It's very gravelly, as you can see from the photographs. So, we don't expect there to be any runoff anyway. And most of it will just go right into the ground. There is a very significant vegetated buffer between this property and the river I did manage to, I remember to bring it. Now, if you look on Google Earth, you'll see a very nice.
Good drive by.
About 100 feet. It shows in one of the pictures too. It's a very heavy wooded buffer between here and the Baker River. And also on the, this side of the parcel, which is the Langdon Woods wooded area. So, we're really not expecting this to be an environmental issue. We don't feel we need a permanent from shoreline protection because we're not really doing any construction there. 250-foot line basically just encompasses the first row of parking. And the only thing we're putting up are concrete barriers set on the ground and a couple of light poles within the district. The light poles will be removed and lights taken down when the project is complete. Obviously, if we need to, we'll talk to DES and arrange for those letters. We have applied the DOT for driveway permit. They've gotten back to us with a couple of comments, mostly administrative. They went to see a notarized letter from Alex Ray confirming that the deal is on for the use of the property. And they had no concerns about site distance or the geometry. They did say that if the asphalt is to remain, then Mr. Ray needs to apply for a permanent driveway permit. And he has not applied to that issue yet. So, if he decides not to get a permanent driveway permit.
What's the square footage of the paved area that we're looking at?
Yeah, I was going to ask that too. 30 feet, 30, 75 feet. There's a 2,400 feet, sparky.
Any board member wishing to question, Mr. Scott just signifying.
The, there is, we're proposing to put a bus stop for the university. Shell Bus Service there and a shelter. There's an existing small 5x9 bus shelter that is just on the east side of, excuse me, the west side of Facility Service Building. We're going to pick up and move, put here. And then when the arena is complete, move it back. The blue phone that is next to FSB will be moved here. It's an old-style blue phone, so it will be discontinued after this project, and a new blue phone at the arena.
That location coming out of town, there's a no, there's a no, or whatever you want to call it.
Right.
And then a corner right there. And people are going to be turning into the left, going into that. Is there any possible way that we could have temporary, you know, flashing lights on both sides of that so that, I know when you're traveling, I know the speed limit is 30 there, so we.
It's actually 40 in that section.
Most people will be going about 60.
It's 40.
40?
It turns to 40 at the top of the.
Okay, so actually, we'll probably be going about 80, like most people. So, you can travel that distance really, really fast, and I was wondering if they would.
I think the authority, wouldn't that be the state? Because it's a state highway in there. I think that would be the case if they dictate that. Well, then we'd have to bring that up. But like I said, we don't have the driveway permit in hand yet. So, I suppose if they wanted to, any issues about that. However, they did get back to us, and I'm sure if they had had a concern about site distance, it would have been brought up right away.
The state may have authority, but this board could raise an issue because it could be viewed as a public safety issue. And I would further embellish Mr. Kelly's comments that I timed the cars today from the beginning of where you can begin to see where the proposed bus stop is. It takes seven to eight seconds at 40 miles an hour for a car to first come into view of the proposed bus stop.
Well, the bus stop isn't going to be on Route 3.
Where is the bus stop?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. The bus stop is inside and over here.
Okay, now, we're talking, but you still have to make a left turn into it.
The bus would come in here.
Yeah.
And go up an aisle.
But they'll be churning left out of the northbound lane.
Right.
That's correct. Peak traffic on that lane is something like 375 cars an hour. And that means you're going to be having about 7.9 seconds every, every car will be going by that bus stop. With an eight-second view, you're going to always have some cars backing up behind a churning bus. So, the bus frequency would be something we'd be very interested in. And I really do see it as a, as a public safety issue if we're going to have that kind of volume of cars and that data is readily available to you, as well as we got it today with one phone call. And I was astounded at the number of cars that are on Route 3 in that vicinity of the bridge. It's a large number. And that peak number, I think, happened to be in in-school month PM average. In other words, noon to 6:00 PM. So, a lot of cars. And a lot of cars going to be backing up, depending on the frequency of the bus making a left-hand turn. So, there is, there is a concern, and I'm glad you brought it up, John. And that's one of the things that I would add to our comment was that we have a major concern with that. Yes, Bill?
Just sort of that same line of thinking. The town can petition the DOT to put up signage on that roadway as you're approaching the rise and curvature of the road. They probably would be more receptive to doing that than to putting a blinking light across the roadway as an alternative.
I don't think they jumped through hoops widening the road yet to make a turn.
I don't think they would.
They come right down there.
Ellen, you can speak during, if I should want to come up as a presenter, you can speak during the public hearing. So, if you want to be a presenter, you're more than welcome. So, just come up and stand with John and identify yourself. Yeah?
I did. Ellen Shippey, Director of Physical Plant with the state. I just wanted to clarify, we haven't determined exactly what the shuttle was going to be to pick and drop students off. The intent of the shuttle is for the remote parking and to bring them to the core of the campus. So, whether it's down at the PE Center or where the stop used to be at FSB, the intent is, and we try to do it in a seven-minute shuttle. One of our thoughts is to take 93 from the PE Center, go up 93, get off the first exit, come into that site off Route 3, taking a right-hand turn into the new lot, then coming back out of there up onto the main piece of the campus, possibly have Toby Road through student apartments. We do a stop now at Langdon Wood, then back around and down High Street and down through. So, that may, that may be, not that you still don't want to need signage, but it might be an alternative.
Okay, and I'll throw another alternative out, because in fact, I think that's a great alternative. The other alternative is to make a right turn onto Old North Main Street, which is where the Plymouth Village Sewer is, and effect a turnaround there. Then you'd be coming back out with a much safer left-hand turn because you'd be doing it from off Route 3. The way you're doing is a little longer, and it would certainly mitigate that stoppage issue that I was talking about, John raised. Yes, Mike? Ellen, you can stay right here.
Rhonda had to hand up first. She can go.
I'm sorry. Rhonda, you're going to have to, my peripheral vision is only nine.
Remember what you have to say, because it's going to be lengthy.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Just a few things, and I like to speak on, as the President of the Gardens for all Plymouth. And I'm concerned here, just because of your mapping here, is showing the bush line here in the garden sitting like right up against the bushes when in fact, you've got this delineated road here, which exists, but the gardens itself is to the left of that, which is putting the garden by this map, if it's done by scale. The, you've got like two rows running in here in the gardens itself because this road right here? like two rows running in here in the gardens itself. Because this road right here, the gardens actually are on this side here. And this is opened up and it's all fenced in.
Different, but this is, that's the, that's the fence.
I see that. I see that. But do you see this road? What's this did over there? What's that?
That's, that's an existing, the existing gravel.
Is a roadway.
undefined, but it's.
That's correct. And that road still is there. The garden, it doesn't go through the garden. The way you have it written here, it's going through the garden. It does not go through the garden.
The fence line goes like that.
The fence line does go in that shape.
Yeah.
But the road here does not go through the garden. The garden.
Rhonda, would you, what's the, what's your question? I don't quite understand.
My question again.
Do you have the, you have the picture of the garden? Does that show it over there?
Yeah. No, because it's not showing this side. The road is over here on this side.
The old, the old access road to the garden?
This, this is from the woods side looking at Route Three. And the road that he's got here on this map is on the other side of this fence. It comes out here across from the water department's building, directly across from the area right after the bridge. There's a road. Cars go in and out of there. On a bicycle, traffic goes in. It's on the backside.
It's probably not a D O T sanctioned road. That would be my guess.
But I'm just indicating that it's not showing properly here. So I don't know whether the rows are correct or not, that the gardens will be affected. The other question I had is if you could show me where the, where the parking is going to be up against the fence line? Like, is there going to be no barrier?
This fence here.
Yep.
Is that one.
Well, it goes out and in.
Then the, the, this part of the fence is the opening, or most people won't go through into the garden. And the fence takes a jog and then this piece of fence line is that. And we're proposing that the park, the first row of parking be in here.
How much footage are you talking? How much footage from, from the fence out?
The fence to that is an aisle of two, twenty-four feet wide. And the parking duct is eighteen feet. So this, this would act as an aisle and the fence would remain and everything on the side of the fence is un.
You're talking eighteen feet from the travel.
Rhonda, maybe I can put your mind at ease with this question. I believe Alex Ray made it quite clear that the public gardens would not be incumbent or compromised. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. I understand that.
Okay.
And then further along, I would like to suggest that maybe if you could put complete barriers to separate the vehicles. Our main concern with the committee on this gardens for all Plymouth is that we were going to be gardening and investing in loads of loom to be able to have this gardens growing. And our concern was being in the public eye that it was just going to ask for people stealing the parts of the gardens. So now we're going to have more of a concern because there's going to be more there. And.
What is the concern, Rhonda?
Is that.
And who are you speaking for?
The college, the Gardens of all Plymouth.
The Gardens of all, okay.
Yeah. Is that there could be a barrier like concrete barriers that you're going to be putting at the ends of these aisles along there to deter people from getting into the gardens?
Well, the concrete barrier is, is a traffic burn.
That's what they're putting in? They're not putting in the toll?
They're not putting the Jersey barriers there. Are they going to be Jersey barriers?
Yeah, on the ends of the aisles.
Just, just one there, one there, one there, one there.
Making the Jersey barriers.
That's a, they're just on the boundaries of that.
Just to delineate the.
And there's gaps between them?
They're actually just freestanding the dark rectangle. That's a, that's a barrier.
Okay, but there, but there's a barrier, then a space, and then a barrier. So are they right up against each other?
No.
These are spaced out.
One, the, the Jersey barriers are anywhere between ten and twelve feet long. And that's a Jersey barrier. They're all separate.
Great. So there is gaps. Okay.
There's about forty Jersey barriers associated with the project.
Just one comment.
Great deal.
With regard to the Jersey barriers, that is a physical immovable object as far as the floodway is concerned.
We're not in a floodway.
Well, there, there is, there is a floodway that does cut across the lower corner of this lot. If you look at the flood maps, you, you find that it does cut across where the gardens are and a corner of this lot. My only comment is that, that being the case, we want to minimize the barriers that we put in that area so that if we have a spring flooding condition, it doesn't impede the natural floodway flow of waters. And we haven't had one of those events in twenty years, but that doesn't mean to say that you can't have one in this cunning spring, given the snowma- snowpack that we have.
I, I, I hear you. I think we can commit that we'll have no barriers in the floodway.
The cars being moved on the back end or do they float away?
Well, you know what they do. That's the big thing.
Yeah, I'm asking.
He's making fun.
Trying to get there.
Mr. Dragon.
All right. Some of the issues we're talking about, if we look in the site construction notes, they have a list there. Number three says place concrete barriers at the end of parking rows, which shows there.
Right.
It doesn't say it's Jersey parking because there is a big difference there. It might be listed somewhere else. I don't have my bag in the file last.
You got them down there. They're moving them from down there.
That's correct.
But it says also in number four, openings with block openings with boulders or concrete barriers. Would that, we talked anything about that you were mentioning, boulders?
No.
What do they mean? The purpose of that note there is if, if you go out there and look, there is an informal opening right here.
Yeah.
We don't want anybody to use any entrance except that.
Okay.
So we don't want certain.
The purpose is that is to prevent any.
And that would be not a safe place to enter and exit because it's too close to the curbs.
Now, Rhonda, are you all, are you, have you, okay, will you frame your question again for the gentleman, please?
Yep. My suggestion, if you guys have any more of those Jersey barriers down there, if you could put a barrier alongside that differentiates the garden's fence to where the cars go, just so we can deter people just to walk over to the, the fence and get into the gardens. Just, it's not going to stop them, but it might be for somebody to do that. Also, if you look, if you can really see it, the, the road here, if you could put like a Jersey barrier to the left and Jersey barrier just, and then put maybe a sign, just no parking beyond this point. So the cars aren't going to go into that area. So they'll stop there and know that the parking is there. Do you understand?
Not quite, quite fully. They're, they're going to be parking along, you know.
They're going to be driving along here. They can continue all the way down through here and go around that side. And there's actually an opening here where cars do come in and out of here, which you got here, but it should be like over there. So my suggestion is when you're coming down here before you get to the gardens, there's a Jersey barrier here, Jersey barrier here. Probably do it on the same, on the backside and put a sign, no parking beyond this point. So the cars don't decide to park along the side there.
There might be conflict between the.
I know. Exactly. Unless there's another suggestion of some sort of fencing that's permissible, I don't know unless I look into it. What kind of barriers is acceptable?
Maybe a chain.
Is that susceptible?
Tree line?
Head?
Yeah.
What chain? Any, you know what I mean?
A chain should be there.
They have honey Jersey barriers.
Okay. All right. One meeting here, please.
Encroachment onto the gardens or discourage trespassers.
Yeah. Okay. The point that I finally get my arms around it, Rhonda's many is that she's concerned that there could be parking behind the garden, parking beyond the delineated parking area. So what, what the question is, can you make some provision to make it clear that this is the end of the parking and they don't get out of there? This, this tree line here is sort of really artificial. You could actually, because there is, it's still four eighty back in here. So.
We don't want the cars going in.
You don't want them there either. So the request was make it clear that.
Chain and signs. I mean, the facilities group has, you know, a bill right to arrange for signage that they do their whole time over campus. So.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's move. Rhonda, we're going to move along. John, question?
Just to an environmental issue. When they were building Lowe's and when they were building Loma, they had a paved parking lot. And everybody was concerned about the waste from cars, the leakage from cars sitting there. And some, most of the time, cars are not there much more than, than they are at, at most. These, some of these cars are going to be sitting there for, I don't know, say weeks on end, but it'll be sitting there for a long time. And I'm wondering if there's any concern about the, and all the students don't have brand-new cars. A few of them have some cars that, that might have leakage from oil and gas and stuff like that. It's been sitting there for a long time. And I guess what I'm saying is if people are concerned about a paved parking lot creating an environmental issue, and that was one of the big stopgaps for both stores, then this is an undetected, well-drained parking lot. And doing well-drained, I would assume that there's, whatever, oil and gasoline, we entered the ground a lot faster, a lot deeper than what those two stores are. I just want everybody to be fair. That's all. If it's good for one, it's good for all. If it's good for all, it's good for one.
Well, the issue about it being only for a little more than a year is, I mean, we're not planning parking cars here over the long term. Cars that are obviously in bad shape and leaking, the university has the right to deal with this in that respect. But I can't stand here and say we're going to trap every drop of oil that drops off the car. Gasoline volatilizes pretty quickly, but, you know, motor oil and that sort of thing. I think in the long term, it would probably be a minor concern, but.
Lowe's had many, many, many indepth studies. And I don't, I think if they have to have it in the.
Well, the other aspect is Lowe's is a permanent facility and it's a permanent parking lot.
Yeah. To put it, yeah, John raised a good point. I mean, if there was a flagrant leak going on in there, you've got a water supply. There's 10,000 gallons of gas sitting out there and 500 cars and.
And it's a lot.
Six hundred gallons of oil. So there's a lot of fuel.
And it's a lot closer to the wellhead.
Yeah.
A lot closer.
So it's just maybe just keep an eyeball out on leaky cars. So, yeah, go ahead. I'm going to get to you, Jack.
Yep.
You're next.
One thing I, I do want to stress is, is as my mentor used to always say to me, there's nothing more permanent than a temporary use. And even though, you know, they say, okay, it's only going to be while they're doing the construction, they're talking about leaving the apron there. And I talked to D O T and they said if that apron is left, that asphalt apron, then they're considering it permanent. They're not considering it temporary. For it to be considered temporary, they have to dig up that apron and then put up some kind of barrier, whatever it is, so that people don't start using it as parking. And just like you stated, it's very close to the university. It's very close to Langdon Woods, their new dormitory, which I don't know if there's other parking available, but this is very convenient. They have a walking trail. If it's truly temporary, that's one thing. But again, I'm just trying to remember what was taught to me over and over again, that there's nothing more permanent than a temporary use. That you create it and then everyone gets used to parking there and then try to tell the students not to park there when their dorm is right there and they've got a parking pad. So we need some kind of assurance or, or see how it will prevent students from using it as permanent. Because when it becomes permanent, we're talking about 500 spaces, all of a sudden now we are talking about environmental impact.
Well, I, I, you have a point. But Langdon Woods does have its own parking. And at the present time, it's not fully.
Okay. So then why is there going to be that path, though?
The pass over there.
Right. But you're going to widen it. So that means there's going to be use between the two. There's a connection between the two.
I think once the permanent lot is constructed next to the arena, that's where the long-term parking will go back to. And that's where the shuttle bus will go to. And that is, I mean, the university is purchasing this. So that's private property. So if somebody parks a car there, Mr. Ray can have them towed and.
Let me comment on the path. I welcome the path.
Sure he would.
The path's a great idea because there's no sidewalk on Route Three on either side. It's, it's a real hazardous bicycle or pedestrian trip to get from the river back up to in the vicinity of the armory. So anything you can do to keep pedestrians off Route Three, we're all for. And putting them on that path, that's one of the reasons I asked, you know, for the surface, because it probably will get a lot of use. And if it's just natural, it'll probably deteriorate. Jack, I owe you a recognition.
No.
No? Okay. I'm going to do my bill and then I'll get to you.
I wish we were sitting here talking about this temporary parking space because you're building a running track where you're building your hockey arena. Love to see a running track at the college, but that's not what we're discussing here. And where does the river go when it leaves this on the map? I don't really see exactly which path it then.
Should brought that in. But the Baker River flows this way. And it curls around and the Pemmy comes down this way. It curves under the I ninety-three, or, yeah, I ninety-three bridge. And then the two join right here and then heads to south.
All right. In this spot, this area here, it's, it's going down, correct?
This is, this is all woods. The river, Baker River comes along this way and then does that. And, and the, the bridge is over here and the village district's office is here and their well is on the other side of the river.
Just one other comment. And that is the Abenaki tribe had one of the biggest concentration anywhere in New Hampshire, right there.
I'm, I'm sorry, John. I didn't hear.
I said the Abenaki tribe at one time had one of the biggest concentration, one of the big, one of the biggest settlements right in that area. So.
Bill, would you put your hand down?
And coming back to your layout, John, the way the lot is laid out, it appears to me that the building pad that was created on that site contains the, the first three parking rows at.
That elevated area.
Yeah. Yep.
And there's going to be no regrading of that pad from what you see out there.
The only.
When it's snowless.
The only regrading that, that we propose is right here in order to make this passable. Right now, it's a little bit steep there. We're going to cut about maybe six inches off it, trim it off so that they can get up and down here without more than maybe ten or twelve percent grading. But it's, it's the amount of earthwork that two guys could do with a shovel in about an hour.
Yeah. Okay. That, that'll leave me as my concern because when that building pad was created and Rand brought in the fill to create that building pad, it was elevated to be above the.
Flood lane.
Flood lane elevation. And we don't want to alter that at all from the standpoint of its future economic development value. So.
Yeah.
Your final question.
Okay. If there are no further questions for John or Ellen, I'm going to ask them to take a seat and we'll open the public hearing. And I don't expect this to be a real long hearing, but I'm going to open a public hearing on the proposed 491 student parking lot, temporary parking lot on Route Three, north of the armory at 7:20 P M. Public hearing is open. Any member of the public wishing to speak in, on this subject, please identify themselves.
Frank Miller. And I stand in support of the temporary parking facility. Comments are that, one, the heritage trail was, cuts across from the marker that's located at the corner, the northeast corner of the army's property. Also, I'd like the board to consider the fact that this property. the fact that this property is consistently used for parking and alternate uses. And it may be to our benefit to ask Alex Ray, the owner, to see about allowing or working through keeping the permanent designed apron access into this lot because we are constantly using it for other uses. And it's part of our commercial development and commercial use of our town and businesses. And I would think it'd be to Alex Ray's benefit to have a properly designed access to his parking system, which is why he purchased it. And also that if in the future, a building were to be placed on that pad site, that appropriate access into and out of that property that would be properly designed and left. Also that this Rand's property had two entrance exits into it. Just past the bridge going south was one entry and then before you put the pad in, you left just prior to get to the monument. So I think this, given the line of sight, the safety, that your approach, departure into this area should be narrowed down to one designed driveway entrance, which they were talking about paving temporarily. But I would, I think it'd be to the benefit of the community that that would remain permanent and that we file or do whatever is necessary as far as any non-source pollution control method in a natural swales, grass lines and stuff to curtail or mitigate any POL lubricants leaking from cars on a temporary basis, because we also use it for those, this mini circus comes down there, they set up their machinery. Again, it's going to be used as an overflow parking on a continuing basis for Alex Ray's business. And I think this is a property that's, needs professional temporary in that we don't want to pave the whole surface, but permanent in the fact that we designed our mitigating elements for the POL and leave that ramp in place.
Thank you. Further comments in the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:24 PM. And we'll return it to the board for a discussion and a motion. Bill?
One other concern I'm going to raise, in reading the notes on your site plan here and the illumination that you're going to have for the lot, it alludes to having a cutoff fixture on the single-headed fixtures. But I, it wasn't clear to me that where you have double-headed fixtures, that those are cutoff fixtures, given the area that you're trying to illuminate.
We're proposing that all of the lights face west, away from the road. The only, there's only woods to the left of Langdon Woods property. And so we weren't actually proposing cutoff fixtures because they're just temporary, they're only going to be up for a year and then taken down. And to use a full cutoff fixture would entail having to put up about three times as many poles against the amount of light that we can get losing this. And since there are no residences that would be significantly impacted, we thought that was a reasonable approach.
Well, I suspect you're aware that the town, Plymouth, adopted a dark skies policy. We look at our applicants that come here, so we're concerned about, you know, light scatter in general. So that's where our concern is, not so much on the battery issue. That's where we have light spillage. It's the greater question of the dark skies philosophy. Mr. Kelly?
I know that, that people have to have parking for the businesses and things like that. And I'm sure they're not going to tell somebody how to run their business or where to pack their cars. But if anybody should pack their car to go to Alex Ray's restaurant for, if that is their actual intent, you would first have to pack a car, go across the busy Route 3, across the bridge, which I don't know whether you had a walkway or not, but if it does, you'd have to go across there, go up, and then go to the restaurant. So, you know, you've got a lot of safety problems in that scenario. And when you're talking only seconds to stop a car, you might have a lot of serious consequences with having that as a permanent parking lot over there. And Mary says it's temporary right now, but all of a sudden it could become very permanent. And there could be a lot of people moving across that road.
Yeah, there's no question there's a pedestrian safety issue.
It could be really, really a problem.
Thank you. Further discussion?
The only other comment I was going to make relative to the issue of highway speeds, the state has also been pretty responsive to requests of local communities to reduce speeds on sectors of their highway within a town where activity is a concern in relation to the speeds that they may have posted. And again, it would not be unreasonable to request from District 3 that they reduce the speed limit from 40 to 30 to the other side of the Tenney Mountain Highway overpass there near McDonald. They could very well do that and reduce the risk, not only for this temporary arrangement, but maybe in the longer term for just the traffic volume and the other movements that we have in that area where there have been a number of traffic incidents within that sector that are well documented. So that's a thought, that the town could make that request of District 3, supported by the university. And I think that would at least reduce the risk.
The other point of view is that that doesn't do anything to the 750 car peak volume. It might add a second to the recognition time. So my fear would be that we think we have done the job relative to safety, when in fact that was, that'd be window dressing. It is, as a couple of people pointed out, you can put 30 or 40 up there. There's a natural kind of speed that does occur. So I'd be reluctant to do that, thinking that, boy, we solved that problem. Because I don't think it would. I think there's a bigger problem there than just the road speed.
Especially to that corner. The hump in that corner, you got a double frame.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask somebody who's been really paying attention to frame the motion. Hearing no discussion. I'm going to go to Bill because Bill does an exceptional job at structuring these motions, folks.
Well, I certainly embrace the basic plan that's before us. I have no qualms with this being a temporary arrangement. And I too would encourage that we retain the paved entrance to the site for the many reasons that have been mentioned. So I will move that we...
Keeping in mind Mary's request.
I would move that we go along with the request of this temporary parking facility, noting the seven concerns that have been raised by staff and that the appropriate letters and certificates be obtained to address those concerns as requested by staff.
Okay. Did that address some of the concerns that Mr. Bishop raised about the parking on the other areas? Or does that not really need to be part of the motion?
I didn't see that as necessary as part of the motion. I think that that's an arrangement that can be mutually worked out between the applicant and the garden club as it relates to the concerns that you raised. I think that what was said here a moment ago, the university would put up signage to at least one, their student populace not to park, interfere with that access area that you were alluding to.
I would like to see it not in the motion as well. So I heard them say that they don't have an interest in people parking outside the area and they're going to sign it appropriately. And if it became a problem, we could keep working on it. Okay, so you've heard Bill's motion. We're looking for a second.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made to, to express the will of the board that we support the general concept of this parking lot and that we adopt the seven comments as noted in our document, and it's available to you folks as well, which expresses the concerns we have in the areas of public safety, environmental, for the record, the high points in each one, a DES compliant letter, a letter from the water district, state of the air compliant, DOT involvement relative to the line of sight, and the traffic management that occurs on left-hand, turning traffic northbound. And the rest of it basically speaks for itself. If we wanted for the record, read the seven statements again. I don't think it's necessary. You're going to have them in the minutes anyway, because we're going to give these to the minutes.
Right, go ahead. Everyone has a copy.
So no confusion on the part of the board. We're expressing our support with the comments. So all those in favor of Mr. Holes' motion, seconded by John Ranlet, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for...
Mary, are you all set?
Just want to make sure they got a copy.
Okay. All right. Item eight on our agenda, unfinished and other business. Any member wanting to bring other business or unfinished business, let us hear about it. Seeing none? I'll move to our second public comment period. Any member of the public wishing to comment?
I would like to comment. Is the next week a black tie event?
Suggested from the public, we should wear all, should wear neckties other than just the usual two. No comment relative to the public comment. And item 10, we're looking for a motion on a German. Make a motion to a German. Moved by Mike Huron, seconded by Mr. Kelly. I mean, he is adjourned. I would say it was 7:35 PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.